All right, welcome everyone. It's the Millville Planning Board. Monday, March 27th. We'll open the meeting with Roel.
Jason Mailey here.
Pam Maloney here. And with us tonight, we have our Associate Planner Pam Williams and our interim planner, Shiloh Muhon. To start off today, I think I'm gonna take things a little bit out of order since our guests are with us tonight unless you wanted to wait for Jack.
I'll text him, but yeah.
Okay. All right. Why don't we have you guys come on up?
You'll see me all over.
It's good for us, she's talented.
All right, so tell us who you are and why you're here and what you're presenting tonight.
This is Susan Gray. And we have, we wanted to talk informally about a proposed subdivision plan that I think I sent a copy to you, did I not? I don't know if you have a copy of it. If you don't...
That's without the contours.
Perfect, cuz I could barely see that when I was by myself. Yeah, that's way better.
Much better.
Do we have a digital copy? If we have anyone watching?
Yeah.
Tim, can I get screen share access?
Yes.
You could've done that, sorry.
Should be able to now.
Perfect, thank you.
Should I give them a little background of how I went to the zoning board for one lot? I couldn't get it.
All right, perfect. So we have it up digitally for anyone watching.
Everybody sees the plan?
Yep.
Yes.
So, okay. As you see, we have about 10 acres of land back here off of Kalani Woods. Guess that's a subdivision that was built. I remember it being built, so of course that could've been a while ago. Anyway, Mrs. Gray owns the 10, 11 acres of land off of that with a 40-foot access strip. And what she would like to do is create this small subdivision to create two lots or from that, say 10 or 11 acre parcel of land. But as you can expect, the economics of trying to build a full-blown subdivision for two lots is not really feasible. And what we've done in a number of towns, well, many towns have retreat lot bylaws, which sort of solves a problem. Millville does not have a retreat lot bylaw yet. I'm sure that someday that will come, but it hasn't yet. So in many towns, you can simply get a permit to allow you to build on a 40-foot right-of-way if you have enough backland. But Millville doesn't have a retreat lot bylaw, so the only sort of workaround we have is that we do an actual subdivision, but typically in these situations to make it feasible, we design it as a private street and request waivers for majority of the improvements since it's really gonna essentially be a common driveway for two houses. That eliminates the requirement for the town to do any maintenance because it remains a private way and the two owners share the responsibility for maintenance and plowing. And frankly, I don't know what Millville's experience has been with that. As I say, we, you know, we have a number of them. I've done in Uxbridge. Blackstone's very liberal about those kinds of things. I just don't know what Millville's experience has been, but...
I know we have a couple of situations like that and it's similar to this one, you know. We don't allow for flag lots, which is why we're having this conversation and some...
So that's, you know, that's the question. We'd have to go through the formal process of subdivision approval, but we'd be requesting waivers for sidewalks and, you know, concrete curbing and those kinds of things. So that's, you know, that's sort of the informal request. Is it something that Millville has considered in the past or will be willing to do before we spend the money to get a full-blown subdivision application prepared?
Well, I think we could certainly look into any situations where this is how it's been handled in the past. I don't know how it's been handled. I know I've seen some of these that exist, but I think we could do a little bit of research on that. And Jack may have already, cuz I know, I think you spoke with Jack a couple, couple years back, right?
Yes, I did. I spoke with Jack and Mr., who is the former building inspector.
Oh, Lincoln Barber.
Yeah. And they suggested, because I had originally gone to the zoning board for one lot back then, but because, something about they didn't have a rectangular shape or something, they turned me down, so they suggested that I go this route.
So is the intention to create two lots or is it really, is your goal one lot and this is a good workaround for it?
No, no, no. No.
Not the two lots.
Two lots, yeah.
We do have to do, we have to go through the engineering process, the approval process, and we do actually have to build, you know, a rudimentary road.
Yeah, cuz it's all ledge, right, isn't it?
It's steep.
I think I drew a by there. So I guess the question I would have is, so that makes sense about the sheer driveway? And again, don't, I don't know the bylaw to know whether or not it's feasible or not. But yeah, that's, that's something. Is that, is that like a flag lot that we don't allow?
We don't, so we wouldn't allow for a flag lot, which would be the non-rectangular lot with the short frontage and, right? So this is, this is the alternative, which is to go the subdivision route. But the land's not big enough to do much more than the two lots, so...
Does that, so I'm guessing, I'm not guessing, I'm saying it cuz I'm sure it's already correct, but the frontage is enough on those, on that cul-de-sac?
Yeah, 200, yeah.
We created a cul-de-sac to comply.
Yep.
We, you know, we wouldn't, we'd be requesting a waiver for having to pave the whole thing.
Okay, what about fire access?
Typically, what we, there's a couple of ways to do that. Basically, it's up to the fire chief. Oftentimes, we do sort of a Y, you know, so you can come in and back out.
Yeah.
But that's up to the chief, you know, how we do that. If he wants a full, you know, circle, you know, can work on that. But as I say, typically, we do, I mean, it's not really much different than a single-family house lot, except it's two houses, so more like a duplex, really. So, you know, typically, we don't do a full-blown cul-de-sac because that's really not required for a single-family house or even a two, two single...
But it will be in the shape that you've put on plans?
The actual layout of the road would be the full cul-de-sac, so, you know, because in order to comply with subdivision, we have to meet the requirements for the size of the cul-de-sac. But typically, we wouldn't pave the whole thing. We'd ask for a waiver from the requirement for full paving, you know, we'd show you what we actually will pave, but as I say, we'll talk to the fire chief about what his minimum requirements are.
Their requirements are.
There were several lots like this in town. There's Chardonnay and Ash Lane, there were several, you know, with one driveway with two houses, there were several in town.
Yes, yes, I know. I'm just not sure what the, what the predicence has been for, like, handling some of the waivers and things like that. I know we have Jack Hunter with us. Jack, I don't know if you're caught up yet, but I know you looked into this a couple years back and I wasn't sure if you had seen anything related to similar situations that Millville has dealt with in the past.
Well, I hear you very well. I can't hear the other two people, but I have met with, I forget her name. I met her a couple times to talk about this property, and I did talk to an engineer who she hired, I don't remember who it was about it, at least a year ago. But what's, what's the issue, I guess, is I see a subdivision with two lots.
Yep. They were asking about if Millville has dealt with similar situations like this in the past where, like, kind of going through the formal process of a subdivision, but then seeking waivers for some of the elements of that subdivision, like sidewalks, for example, because this would be essentially functioning as a...
Yeah, you know, I don't know if Millville has, certainly, you know, not since I've been helping. I don't know about you, Pam, you're probably the oldest member on the, not in age, but in tenure.
Watch it, Jack.
My noise is remote.
Yeah, no, I haven't seen this personally either, so I think we would have to do a little bit.
But regardless, you know, it's up to you guys. I don't know what the drainage implications are. I'd be concerned about that. I don't know about, you know, are they asking for a waiver on paving? Is it gonna be dirt?
No, it's not, it's not gonna be dirt. It'll be paved, but it won't be paved to, you know, 26 feet.
Yeah. So what are some of the other issues? Of course, we don't have water or sewer. So I think that, and to make sure that whatever you're comfortable with, that public safety is comfortable with it and that they can get in and out of there easily with their vehicles.
We did talk about that.
Falls on the fire chief because he's got the biggest vehicle or seat. But they still have to go through the subdivision control law and they still, you still have to have a public hearing. And I would strongly urge you, once they've submitted formally, that you give it to the peer engineer and have them comment on it. I just, I haven't been out there and I don't know if we have slope issues and things like that, cuz you don't wanna mess. You wanna, if they're gonna ask for waivers, that means if you give them, you're responsible for them, so to speak, at the end of the day, so...
I think you said there was slope issues, correct?
Yeah, it's a fairly steep access. I don't know off the top of my head, know what the requirements are in Millville with respect to grading, but I suspect, you know, we may need a waiver from the grade requirement.
So if, if the grading's heavy, you wouldn't be able to pave that much because a runoff would be pretty significant, wouldn't it?
Well, that's, again, that's a drainage question we'd have to address and, you know, I guess, you know, I'm happy to talk about it, but I guess our initial request is, look, is this something the town is willing to consider? Because before we spend a lot of money doing things like designing drainage, getting, you know, giving a large deposit for peer review and all that kind of stuff, we wanna, we don't wanna do all that if the board's position says, no, no, we're not gonna consider this.
I mean, plus there's a bylaw that says otherwise, I'm not negatively opposed to it.
Yeah, I mean, and you're not the first folks to come to us with a situation like this, and I know that, you know, we've made recommendations in the past of subdivisions being kind of the way to get access to this kind of locked land in some cases.
It's also unique that you have an access to it, which is usually everything backed as landlocked, so...
Yeah, exactly. But I, you know, to Jack's point, I think there would be a process, you know, you're gonna have to make sure that the fire chief is on board. We would get a peer review to take a look at it and, you know...
Yeah, I assume, Pam, that they'll come in with a list of waiver requests and then, you know, I think peer, your peer engineer will tell you what's appropriate and what isn't. And obviously, he'll, he will visit the property and get a better understanding of it, and of course, you guys can too.
I guess the only other question I have is where, where the lack of a better term, the curb cut is. There's a 20-foot radius on each side? Does that all on your property or is that cut into the abutters?
It's an easement that we have, shown on the original subdivision plan.
Thank you. So when the engineer on their property also, you have the easement?
As a practical matter, you're not gonna need that radius anyway, you know, cuz when the pavement comes out to meet the exist, edge of existing pavement, you're gonna have plenty of...
It's listed, so that's why I asked.
What's that?
It's on there, so that's why I asked about it.
Yeah, no, I, well, see, that was designed, you know, in the anticipation of a full-blown subdivision. In which case, if you have, you know, I don't know what your, what your pavement width requirement is in this particular zone, but, you know, if you look at, you know, your neighboring town with a 30-foot wide requirement, you'd need the full thing, but, you know, if we're gonna go with like 18 feet, I think is what we're proposing, you're not gonna need those easements. You're gonna be well within 40 feet.
I think when the planning board, when the Kalani Woods subdivision was approved...
Yeah, they left that.
Yeah, and the planning board, I think it's a 40-foot strip because at that time they were saying 24 feet of road and eight feet on each side, you know?
Yeah, of course, Jack.
I heard you talking about this rounding easement. I, it's hard to hear what's... No, you, I have no issue with. Is that easement exists today?
Yeah, that was left on the original subdivision plan, so that's there.
Oh, good, good. And then, and then, of course, I assume, and I don't recall, that Millville's subdivision control law says you need 50 feet of right-of-way. So there's a waiver right there, I assume. Now, it is only two lots, so there, you know, that's not the worst thing in the world. But if, if you move toward approving this, when you do, if you do, you're gonna have to have conditions or deed restrictions that it will never be public, that the two lots or the two lots can't be further subdivided, things like that, so that if you have given the waivers for sidewalks and road width and all that junk, that it will hold true to what's being displayed.
Yeah, we have some standard language that we usually incorporate into the documents so that there's a permanent restriction on the land. That's typical. In fact, several of your neighboring towns have, you know, formal, formal documents to utilize under those circumstances. So I'm pretty familiar with, with that.
We don't have that, but...
We're happy to share.
We can add that to the list for someday if this becomes a thing. But we can certainly look into our subdivision bylaws, make sure that you have access to them and that we're all up to date on them as well. What other questions do you have for us?
No, I think we're all set. You know, we, we have our engineer prepared to do a waiver, list of waiver requests.
Okay.
You know, we'll take a closer look at the engineering. Who's your consultant for peer review?
We've used TEC in the past, I think, but that was a while ago, so I'm not sure.
I'll check with Peter.
Yeah.
Who is it, I'm sorry?
We're gonna check with Peter Caruso, the town headman.
It's been a while since we had to use our peer review.
So, so as I say, all we're really looking for is some informal input. Is this something the town's willing to consider or are we wasting our time and money? But I get the sense that you're not unalterably opposed to the concept, so if we can make it reasonable, you'll consider it.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd be worried about is the slope with drainage, but that's not for today, that's...
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
So much nicer than the old town hall. No creaky floor.
Now you lost me.
Different type of character.
Do we only have five members?
We normally have five members, yes.
Yeah.
It's hard to get people, huh?
Is this building not gonna be permanent or is this still temporary?
This is still temporary, I believe, yeah.
Be determined.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you need this one back?
Do you want the other one back?
Do you want this one back?
I don't need it.
I'll hold on to it, I'll just keep it in the file. That'd be great, thank you.
Nice, thank you.
It's exciting to see you guys live. And you finally let Pam off the table.
She's here. She's always here, she just hides. It's good to see you, Jack.
Good to see you.
Good to hear you, Jack.
Am I leaving my duty or are you good?
We are good. You have a lovely evening.
Are you guys all set for town meeting? I know Dylan isn't gonna be there. I did offer to come if you really needed me.
I think how we talked about it last time was, right now, I think we're all pretty comfortable, but if something were to change after our public hearing, you'll be hearing from me.
Okay.
I have one question, Jack. So on 4/10, that's our public hearing for the, the warrant articles. We might not have quorum.
A quorum of the planning board?
Of the planning board members, yeah.
Well, so then there will be no vote? When is the meeting again of the planning board?
4/10.
And why can't you continue it to another meeting?
We can, we can continue it to the next meeting.
Pardon me?
There's, there's one more meeting before town meeting, so we can continue it to the meeting after.
And why can't you do that?
We can, we can.
Or is that the question?
Yeah.
Yes. The only, only time you run into trouble is that you have to make a decision, and if you don't, and you notify and you haven't held a meeting or a hearing and there's 10 days, you have to notify them and you don't notify them, they could not, they could table the whole thing or pass over it. But as long as you take a vote, you're good.
Okay, okay.
I guess another question about...
The 24th is fine to take a vote.
Yeah.
Jack, we want to appoint, or at least discuss appointing Pam for, for a planning board position. We have, we have, Justin Allen's not present, but he did send a letter recommending it. Is that enough for us to take a vote on that today so that we could schedule something with the, with the selectmen for a joint meeting?
One more time on that, I, you're gonna...
So Justin Allen's not present. We would like to nominate Pam or discuss it for a planning board member.
Yep.
Can we, with the letter from Justin Allen recommending it, take a vote today so that we can schedule something with the selectmen for a joint meeting? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, we're looking to make a recommendation.
Because you only have two people?
Yes.
With the letter supporting it.
But we have a letter from a third member.
Technically, I don't think that's kosher.
Okay, that was the question.
Yeah. We'll get there.
You're all bad news.
We'll get there, yeah.
I'm all bad news. So was that, I've never, was that Attorney Lane that was with you? Yeah, I've never met him, but I've heard of him and I think I've talked to him on the phone, okay.
I'll take care of your one, you're probably good.
You know, that, that property, I'll just kind of digress here, but that property has gone through quite a legal labyrinth, if you will. I know that ZBA led her down the wrong path and then she went back to the ZBA and they denied her. So, not to feel sorry for her necessarily, but just, there's a history there.
Yeah, I drove by the property, it's just, the big thing is the access from the road.
Is it sloped at all?
Sloped and all rock. If it's the same thing, then I, I'm pretty sure it is. I mean, it's pretty easy to find.
Yeah, I, we're gonna have to, you know, I can't even remember who our peer engineer is. I talked to him on the phone when I first got there, but I never used him.
If you see, I don't know if you got the email with the attachments, there's an attachment showing the slope of the grade and it's...
Oh, no, I didn't see that.
You wish, you wish your 401K looked like that.
That's a serious thing, you know? They're gonna have to handle that somehow.
Well, that's the thing, is with the high slope and then you're talking runoff, so that's kind of...
Yes, I, I, they're not gonna be happy with the answer, I don't think.
Is that subdivision road, is that an accepted town road or is that, is that a homeowner's road, like a homeowners association road?
Which, the one that they're proposing?
No, the one that they're on, Kilney.
I think it's a...
Kilney Woods.
I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's headed on...
Dylan could ask the town clerk, Shiloh.
Just because I think that would be another wrench in it, cuz...
Yeah, yeah.
I'll do some research in the background before they even apply.
The problem with private roads, and we have, we have it in the bylaw in Uxbridge that you can have them, and it's caused controversy. And most of the controversy is with public safety. That it's a private road. They could put a gate up. They could put anything they wanna. Or they could choose, after cycles of house ownerships and when we're all gone, except for Dylan, that, that they're gonna stop maintaining it. And public safety can't get in there. So we've run into a whole series of problems with, with public safety. So just be careful. I think, thank God, it's only two lots, and I think you're gonna hear from those two people that live next to it.
Yeah, but this is like the one piece of property I've seen on the books that actually has access, that has a right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's legit. And it was left there for a purpose. There's not a question. And, and ZBA played a role in that, and I don't remember exactly what, how, but this is years ago. So just, yeah, you'll be fine, and I'll help you, I'd be glad to with Dylan. Dylan's, very good hands with Dylan. All right.
All right, thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
See you, Jack.
Bye, Jack.
So getting back to our agenda, there's really not a lot else that we can actually attack without a full board, so do you have any updates for us, Dylan?
Updates? We, I will be posting this, I wanted to check with you. This is for the special permit for the office space at 35 to 37 Central Street. The applicant is Bruno Antiques, we've talked about it.
Yep.
So I'm just about to send out the public hearing notice for that.
Okay.
It'll be on the 24th.
Okay.
So I just, I just got the whole abutters list and I'm gonna send that out this week.
So they did submit?
So they're submitting tomorrow, so I'm sort of like ready, I'm gonna have everything ready in advance. So they're supposed to come in tomorrow with their application.
Good.
So that'll be good. And then the other thing I have in your packets is just the updates. I thought it was gonna print in color and it didn't, so there were things in red. They're not red anymore, but you can sort of see where I cross stuff out and change some of the text.
Yes.
Yeah, so I made a few changes there. We can, we can definitely look at that today and, you know, we don't have to add anything extra onto our plates, but just so we're ready for either the 10th or the 24th.
Yep.
We'll, we'll get this in. The thing is moving it, continuing it.
Yeah, so we can hold the public hearing and then continue our vote to the following meeting?
Yeah.
It just cuts it close.
I think, yeah, that's the thing, I think we can still...
Or can we hold the public hearing, close the public hearing and then vote at the next meeting?
I think you should keep it open.
Keep it open, okay.
Yeah, or even just on the 10th, announce that it's continued, but if people wanna come, you know, you wanna give them some advance notice, so it's kind of difficult.
And we need three of us there for that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And did Preston say he can't come as well or do we not know yet?
He just didn't answer, so we're not sure.
So I'll, I'll just bug him and say, like, we need you on the 10th, we need you on the 10th.
Yeah, that'll be...
And make sure he comes.
That'll be key.
Yeah.
And then if we do get, if we can anticipate that he's gonna be there on the 10th, I think it would be good to reach out to the selectmen to get an agenda item on there.
Yeah, I've talked to Peter. He's aware of what warrant articles we're bringing.
Okay.
I need to submit this, this week.
Okay.
So I'm going to be submitting this. Obviously, there can be changes after the 10th and after, you know, but I'm submitting this as our, our rough draft, basically.
Perfect.
So it's, it's a final draft for us, but a rough draft for them.
All right. And then the other thing we could also submit, if we can anticipate, Preston, would be the appointment.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'm in contact with Peter on that too, so I'll ask what they need.
We did, we could do the same thing, joint meeting, at the same time.
You might not even need to do a recommendation... You might not even need to do a recommendation in the planning board meeting if they own, they might just want the planning.
To do a joint.
Yeah. And then you just do the vote there. Great. So I'll, I'll ask them.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Yeah. Peter wasn't sure what, what the select board wanted, so I think he'll check with them.
What, let them know we can be amenable to.
Great.
Whatever. We need a board.
Seems like it's going backwards again.
I know. We had a good, like, week.
Maybe it's just the Mondays. Maybe just.
Yeah, a different day or something. Well, we've tossed that around a few times, too, whether Mondays have become difficult. I mean, everyone's, you know, schedules change and whatnot.
Right.
I'm open to whatever we need to do and figure it out.
I'm available any day, so.
All right. So taking a look at the warrant articles and the proposed language, it looks like the, the first piece I came across that we want to look at then would be under the intent and purpose of the missing definitions.
Yeah, the, right above that, in the, in that question one, the one thing I did add here was variance permission from the zoning board of appeals to depart from these bylaws.
Oh, yes, okay.
Added that.
Yep, which we talked about. That's perfect.
Yep. And then the intent and purpose, I rewrote.
Yeah, could it puts it on the CM? RPC.
I tried to clarify that.
Using the language.
That you guys are the ones who have, who've decided on this. It wasn't CM RPC who wrote these definitions for us.
Yep. Perfect. I mean, this meets the challenge that I felt like we faced last time.
Great. There's, question four and all of these have a blank spot for the money. I got, I got a number today. It's sort of a ballpark, so I might, I might not be putting it in here. I'll just warn you guys, when you go to the town meeting, if, you know, we're going to say it is in the, the clerk's budget already, any maintenance to the code.
Okay.
It's already part of their budget.
Okay.
It's already included. They have a relationship with this company that we pay them yearly. We pay them when we need to. It's not, Diane says that's.
It's not like a per.
It's not a new thing we needed to add in, nothing. So it's somewhere between $800 and $2,000. It depends on what it is. And she's like, it's already completely included.
Okay.
It shouldn't be an issue for them.
So it's not, it's not above and beyond anything that we haven't already anticipated?
Nope.
Not at all.
Wouldn't it be zero, because it's already?
It's already allocated, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe the way to word it is that this would incur no additional.
Exactly.
No additional fee. I have the line item. They can look it up if they want, because that's, I have the expenditure count. There's a history there.
Reference that.
Yeah, it's all referenced. It'd be good.
All right. And then, on, intent and purpose of the additions or the modifications?
Yep. Similar start to it, but different in the middle. Minute more specific to exactly what we're talking about.
Exactly what we're changing and why. Again, I feel like this meets the challenge that we presented to you, so I'm comfortable with this language. Same thing on question four about the cost.
Yep.
Nothing additional incurred.
Yep.
Just wish it was in red.
Printout, what, like 33 pages?
Don't. Um, is there anything in this, this, the master general law section is all the same?
All the same, yeah.
That was low hanging. Anything else in the, the bylaw, I mean, the, yeah, in our warrant article that we want to talk about? Was there anything in the first one?
The first one should be all the same. Just the money.
Just the same.
Yeah, yeah. And when I talked to, when I talked to Peter about this, I was, I was worried, because I know they, they read these out loud.
Yes.
And so I hope you don't have to read all of this out loud. He said, no, no, that'll just be extra detail. So.
Okay.
Should be good. He's not going to have to go and say Oxford English Dictionary online. It should be good on that. I wanted to give as much detail as possible, but then they can take it out if they need.
Perfect. All right. So next steps for this, then, we have the public hearing that's scheduled for the 10th, public comment. That'll give us one more opportunity to make any.
Yeah.
Last-minute changes. Then we would vote to send this language off to be included?
Yep, exactly.
So this was sent out with a notice?
This was sent out with a, a notice was sent to the budding towns. And it, I think, is published in the paper today and will be published again on the 3rd. So then, yeah.
It's really important. We do this on the 10th.
Yeah, that's sort of why I kind of wanted to, to get in there if we can.
We will. It'll happen. Fantastic. All right. Doesn't look like we have anyone for public forum. Anything else that you want to discuss tonight? I know we had originally talked about, we were reviewing some of the towns you sent us information related to their.
Still building a big spreadsheet.
Yep.
I figured it'd be worth having a nice big spreadsheet before we go into it.
I like it. Visual is good.
Yeah. And more people to talk about it with.
Yep. So we'll just keep that for the future meeting.
Yeah, it's for the future, anyway.
Yep. Anything else we need to talk about this evening?
Not me.
Motion to close the hearing, meeting?
Can we roll that? I'll make a motion to close out the meeting.
I'll second it.
Second it.
All right, here we go. All in favor?
Jason, I.
Am I?
Am I? All right. Have a lovely evening, everyone.